Ah, okay, start panna. Uh, in our screen share pannirukka, visible arukka, PPT teridha?
Ah, clear arukka, teriduka.
Uh, voice audibula arukulla?
Ah, okay ka.
Ah, okay, start panna.
Okay.
Uh, so, nama inniki pakkakorudhu vandu, the Puducherry Buildings Lease and Rent Control Act of nineteen sixty nine. So, na, munna specific relief act adukummo sonna mathriye, or act ne edutha, and act vandu, nama start pannradhe, and act edukaka kodu unnanga, and radhle, and da start pannanu nama. Appada, and act udai ellap provisions, and we padikimbo do, nama kundu easya puriyoo. Like, vandu, in the reason kaha, itu vandirukkun, go, then, nama laala relate pani, and, nama, that understand manikirathu, then, nama kisiya arukku. So, in that, vandu, it's called the Puducherry Buildings Lease and Rent Control Act of nineteen sixty nine. And, uh, itla vandu thirty-five sections irukku, rendu schedule irukku. So, nama vandu first to start pannradhe, vandu, objectives and preamble start pannikka, arutu over sectiona, and we polla. So, in that act udai objectives, da first slide kattara. Adal vandu, uh, so, in that act udai objective venne, and radhle, vandu. Adadu, in that, vandu, edukaka kodu unnanga. What is the reason for enactment of Puducherry Buildings Lease and Rent Control Act, and radhle, in the objectives, enna, and radhka, answer arukka moodiyoo. So, on the, in that act, vandu, year, pathingna, nineteen sixty nine. So, on the periodla, enna maru, or situation prevailaitrunduduna, um, remba high rent, like, vandu, or proportione, illama, oru, oru nyayame, illama, nareya rent demand pannakoodi, oru situation, like landlord, vandu, landlord, adakai, vandu, ongiyirundudu. Like, avanga, vandu, uh, only because they own the building, avanga, they had the right to receive rent, avanga, they started to demand disproportionately high rent. High rent, mottu kadayadu, disproportionately high rent. Adadu, veetu ketha vaadugaya, illama, uh, we, and the veetla, are communities, and the veetla, are facilities, ketha rent, jasthiirunna paravallu. And the veetu ko, and, avanga, keekira, demand pannada, rent ko, samanamayala, the maru, rent, vandu, demand manipunna. So, in the mariana, situation, vandu, appa prevailaitrunduduna, then, tenants udai right, vandu, safeguard pannano, abdi, ingra reason, adu, udai, in the main reason, in the situationla, da, in the main reason, tenants udai right, safeguard pannanu, and radhle, reason kaha, mattume, in that act, vandu, kodu unnanga. So, in that act udai provisions, na, sonnaila, thirty-five sections irukku, rendu schedule irukkutte. So, itu ellathileme, pathingna, mostly, uh, like, ellathileme, runna, avakoodiya, or commonana, vision, enna, varukunna, tenant udai right, safeguard panntra, madriya, da, arukku. Landlords udai right, vandu, uh, safeguard panntra, maru, landlord, savevap panntra, madriya, and provisions, vandu, remba, 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 kame, in the thirty-five la. So, tenant, pathukakradhe, farant fix pannradhe, avangalak, vandu, eviction, kodukunno, abdi, na, avangal evic pannanu, na, landlord, enna grounds irukka, avar, enna, procedure, follow pannanu, tenant, kundu, enna, right, radhle, italana, in the thirty-five sectionsla, jasthiirukku, metavara, landlord, favor panntra, maru, provisions, remba, kame. Ena, appa prevailaitrundu, situation, apri, so, on the reason kaha, kodu, arukka, ta, act, da, adu. So, in the law, vandu, enna, soluduna, it permits eviction of tenants, only for certain reasons. On the certain reasons, da, section ten, in that actla, section tenla, grounds for evictionla, koduthirkamu. So, adi, enna, and radhle, on the grounds, kida, mattu, na, ninga, vandu, tenant, vandu, evic pannamoodiyoo, one. Reda, adu, rent. So, controller, notra, appoint pani, and authority, he is empowered to fix the farant for each and every building. So, in the farant concept, and radhle, vandu, vandu, Kamunada Act of nineteen sixty nine, eeryindudu. But, two thousand seventeen act, per feelai, ipponama force, la, erkrarala, in the maru, concepts, allah, illa, nareya, vandu, changes, vandirudhu. But, Pondicherry la, vandu, an, ipponama, kierkara, two thousand seventeen act, madri, avangal, vandu, inna, change, arukla. Rent, tenancy, this samanamana, provisions, ellam, govern pannradhe, vandu, Puducherry Buildings Lease and Rent Control Act of nineteen sixty nine, mattunna. So, uh, in the rent objective, like, vandu, objective, vandu, tenants udai right, safeguard pannradhe. So, on the objective, attain, panntra, madri, on the objective, vandu, nama, vandu, uh, easya, vandu, uh, enforce, panntra, madriyan, vision, gilkaha, rendu, uh, mukkiamana, edukaha, and, sarkta, vandu, eedrapattudu. One, vandu, permits eviction of tenants, only, only upon certain grounds, adadu, section ten, vandu, 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 pakkavurukku. Adutthu, it empowers the controller to fix farant. So, in the objectives, base pannida, in the entire, uh, thirty-five sections, and two schedules, vandu, runna. So, adukthu, nama, pakkavurudhu preamble of the act. So, na preamble, vandu, in the sections, uh, section one, short title, extend, and commencement, munnadi, irukku. So, adal, pathingna, na, act, to regulate the letting of residential and non-residential buildings, and the control of rents of such buildings, and the prevention of unreasonable eviction of tenants therefrom, in the union territory of Puducherry. So, in the whole preamble, you, rendu partka, pirikila. One, to regulate the letting of buildings. So, it can be both residential and non-residential building. And, aduktha part, enna, thana, uh, eviction of tenants, vandu, sila groundsla, then. So, on the grounds, da, section ten, ekia, soliirukku. And, enna rent payable, and radhle, poruthu, farant fix pannradhe, poruthalama, provisions irukku. So, in the preamble, mu, mo, portiona, nama, pirichu, first portion, vandu, entire letting of buildings, regulate pannradhe. Buildings, and radhle, residential, ko, porundho, non-residential, ko, porundho. Reda, adu, rent payable, poruthu, enna dispute, vannalo, illa, farant fix pannradhe, naalo, itu, elladu, patthina, provisions, u, itla, varo. So, adaportina, regulations, kodukradhuka, ho, in that act, kodu unnanga. And, third one, vandu, unreasonable, tenants, evic pannirukkada. So, they have let, uh, let down certain grounds, under section ten of this act, to state that, in the grounds, kida, mattu, na, ninga, vandu, tenants, vandu, evic pannamoodiyoo, abdi, soliirka. So, in the preamble, land, ninga, pathingna, avangal, three portions, a, pirichukkina, in the entire act, me, in the mo, portion, kula, then, varamari, arukku. Uh, so, ninga, in the section, eddingna, in the mo, head, kida, edavu, head, kida, kodan, thalana, ninga. So, section, ippona, sonnaila, section one to thirty-five, na, so, ipponama, one and thirty-five, variki, pakkavurukku. So, in the section one, as usual, eppon, bola, short title, extent, and commencement. So, na, munna, sonna, maru, this act, maybe called the Puducherry Buildings Lease and Rent Control Act of nineteen sixty nine. Iduna, short title. It udai extent, inana, uh, obviously, it vandu, Pondicherry, kaplaya, koodi, act. So, it udai extent, vandu, to the pole of union territory of Pondicherry, Puducherry. So, it, it, it udai, it udai, alavugayin, soluvanga, extent, enthalavu, it, applya, ah, vandu, vandu, uh, to the whole union territory of Puducherry, it, applya. And commencement, epthulene, in that act, vandu, force, vandichu. In that act udai, provision, la, pathingna, direct date, soliirkumattanga. Enna, soliirpanga, government, vandu, notification, pooti, enna, teerilena, applya, avan, soldanga, on the teerilena, itu, vandu, in that act, vandu, force, varu, un, soliirpanga. So, such notification was issued on one eight nineteen sixty nine, and it was stated that, the act will come into force from one eight nineteen sixty nine. So, commencement, in, patta, one eight nineteen sixty nine. So, in the date, vandu, directa, provision, la, koduthukumattanga, ninga, kida, footnote, la, pathingna, and the official, guess, udai, koduthirpanga, one eight nineteen sixty nine, radhle. So, section one, over, at the section two. Uh, clearanka, proceed pannradhe.
Okay, madam.
Adutthu, section two, uh, section two, vandu, as usual, definition clause. Itla, vandu, eleven terms, are defined, manirka, avanga. Uh, like, eleven terms, e, nama, derunchitna, avasya, illa. Mama, vandu, itla, vandu, ippona, vandu, domestic violence, act, un, padichona, uh, like, vandu, domestic relation, na, enna, and the act udai, mainana, vaartekal, nama, derunchitka, podu, juvenile justice, act, un, padichunna, juvenile, na, yaru. Ipo, vandu, folks, act, padikunna, child, na, yaru. And the maru, and the act, poruthu, mainana, terms, kana, definition, mattu, nama, derunchitka, podu. So, in the section two, la, eleven terms, are defined, manirka. But, adal, na, vandu, sila, mukkiamana, definitions, mattu, na, eduthu, quote, pani, arutthu, solapuray, in the eleven terms, na, ninga, list, pannirukka. Itla, na, ippona, aduktha, aduktha, subsections, odai, or, na, lanchi, terms, odai, definitions, like, vandu, ippona, aduktha, aduktha, section, section, three, le, and thirty-five, variki, na, padichunla, in, and the terms, kala, enna, definition, thea, pattudun, thonu, and, and, mattu, na, vandu, in, explain, pani, solapuray, adutthu. So, section two, vandu, eleven terms, defined, manirka. Adal, vandu, two clause four, vandu, building, na, enna. Building, vandu, it means and includes, in the definition, pannikka, naalo, puriyoo. Uh, means and includes. Means, na, edakurikidu, arutthi, includes, na, edadukla, enna, and the mariana, vision, gilkala, itu, kula, varu. And does not include, edalaa, itukil, varadu. So, in the building, the term, kana, definition, e, nama, mo, na, pirikiru, means, includes, and does not include. So, mo, na, pirikiru. So, itla, means, vandu, enna, thana, uh, building means, building or hut. Or its heart, entera, irukunna, avasya, kadayadu, adal, oru portion, a, kuda, irkla. Apri, on the portion, o, illa, on the entera, building, o, hattu, residential, o, non-residential, purpose, kaha, let out, pannidu, then. In that act, poruthu, that, building, un, solu. So, building, a, orukla, hatt, a, orukla, adudum, entera, portion, e, ninga, let out, pannidla, illa, adudum, oru, pagadi, e, ninga, let out, pannidla. And, on the purpose, vandu, residential, kaha, orukla, non-residential, kaha, orukla. So, itu, da, on the means, portion, kula, varakoodiya, definition. And, uh, aduktha part, vandu, includes, edalaa, vandu, uh, itukula, varu, building, the vaartekla, edalaa, ninga, vandu, ulakodu, varla, na, garden, grounds, outhouse, or any furniture, that has been given by the landlord. Itu ellamay, vandu, building, the vaartekla, adangu, adadu, in that act, poruthu, mattu, na, solra. In that act, poruthu, enna, adatla, ninga, building, the vaarte, pattalo, garden, o, ground, o, outhouse, o, illa, furniture, o, landlord, kodutha, furniture, o, idundu, naalo, adu, ellamay, vandu, building, the term, kula, varu. So, includes, clear, naalu, category, garden, ground, outhouse, or any furniture, which has been given by the landlord. And, uh, third portion, vandu, does not include, edalaa, building, the vaartekla, varadu, for the purpose of this act, da. Room, in a hotel, or a boarding house, adu, vandu, building, na, but, in that act, poruthu, mattu, na, adu, vandu, building, un, consider, pannamattanga. Hotel, yo, or boarding house, yo, nama, edukr, room, and radhle, building, kida, varadu. In that act, poruthu, mattlu. Andhala, building, the vaartek, and a definition, section two clause four, la, soliirka. Adu, mo, portion, a, pirikiru, means, includes, and does not include. Adal, means, la, building, illena, hut, la, adudum, mo, pagadi, o, illa, oru portion, e, ninga, vandu, residential, o, non-residential, purpose, kaha, o, vaadik, vitr, ninga, lease, vitr, ninga, let off, pannidu, ninga, abdi, ingra, vachchutla, it's called as a building, under section two clause four. And includes, na, oru, naalu, list of categories, solranga, garden, ground, outhouse, or any furniture, which is given by the landlord. Itu ellamay, building, the vaartekla, adangu. Edalaa, varadu, in the building, the vaartek, kida, thana, does not include, room, in a hotel, or a boarding house. Adu, generala, pathingna, adu, building, na, but, in that act, poruthu, mattu, na, that, building, un, consider, pannamattam. And, adukthu, vandu, government, na, enna, nareya, adatla, government, and radhle, vaate, vandu, uh, use, pannavanga, government, na, enna, na, itu, union territory, ingra, thana, kujja, adu, vandu. Uh, specifically, ka, nama, pakkavandirukku. Uh, so, government, na, yaru, na, article two thirty-nine of constitution, la, central government, vandu, yaru, vandu, on the concern, union territory, kida, administrator, appoint, panntrangu. Avangala, da, government, un, puripu, like, consider, pannanu, un, solranga. Uh, section, padikiru. Government means the administrator of the union territory, appointed by the president, under article two thirty-nine of the constitution. Uh, ippona, generala, mutha, act, la, ninga, pathingna, government, na, state government, lena, central government, radhle. Itu, something of, oru, oru, different category, union territory, ingra, thana, itu, nama, kujja, derunchit, karchidu, na, ladu. Uh, article two thirty-nine, ekia, uh, president, sorry, actually, itla, central government, un, pootirukka. Uh, president, vandu, yaru, vandu, uh, administrator, appoint, panntrangu. He will be considered as the government for the purposes of, uh, Pondicherry Buildings Lease and Rent Control Act. Adukthu, vandu, section two clause seven, two clause seven, la, landlord, na, yaru, and radhle, solranga. So, ippona, vandu, landlord, na, yaru, na, any person, it includes, itu, me, includes, definition, na, means, kadayadu, means, na, and the vaartek, kana, artta, solruthu, means, definition. Includes, na, oru list of, uh, vision, gil, soli, itla, adukula, varu, abdi, solruthu, includes. So, in the vaartek, includes, and, na, defined, manirka. Any person includes the person who is receiving, receiving, or is entitled to receive the rent of a building, whether on his own account, or on behalf of any other, or on behalf of himself, and others, or as an agent, trustee, executor, administrator, receiver, or guardian, or who would so receive the rent, or be entitled to receive the rent, if the building were led to a tenant. So. Itu, kansiisa, nama, epdi, purunchikla, na, itla, enna, sama, derunchikvandiru, vision, one, na. Landlord, na, yaru, kurikidu, yar, yar, include, pannu, any person who is receiving the rent. Rent, vandu, yaru, vangrangu, avangala, vandu, landlord, na, ninga, edhukla, illena, on the property, poruthu, rent, vangrathu, kia, yaru, koori, may, arukku, any person who is entitled to receive the rent. And the rent, vangrathu, kia, yaru, koori, may, arukku, avangal. Yeah, and the property, poruthu, yaru, krent, vangrathu, koori, may, arukku, avangal, e, ninga, landlord, consider, pannla. So, adu, da, in the definition, la, soliirkara. And, adu, vandu, ninga, enna, na, inu, further, epdi, padikinu, na, on the rent, vangrathu, vangrharu, un, solrung, le, yar, vangrathu, koori, may, arukka, varu, owner, un, kudan, ninga, assume, manikla. Vangravu, vandu, property manager, arukla, na, enna, udai, property, pattukrathu, kudar, solirukka, avar, vandu, rent, vangi, it, karu, abdi, na, avar, vandu, he is not entitled to receive the rent, but, he is a person who is receiving the rent. So, on the, in the, rendu, category, explain, pannradhuma, da, on the full class, may, irukku. And the rent, a, varukaha, a, varu, vangla, illa, vera, yaru, vera, yaru, kaha, a, the, vangi, a, varu, kodukla, illa, a, kaha, in, orut, kaha, seethu, kuda, vangla. So, adu, italaa, 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 consider, e, pannananda. Rent, vangrathu, yaru, vangravu, avanga, illa, rent, vangrathu, kia, yaru, koori, may, arukku, avanga, yar, naalme, landlord, under section two clause seven of Puducherry Buildings Lease and Rent Control Act. And, itla, oru, explanation clause, orukku. Adenana, ippona, oru, tenant, irukka, avar, a, var, property, vandu, tenant, kitta, vitr, karu, on the tenant, enna, pannrana, sublet, pannraru, inna, orukkara, t, tenant, second tenant, kuda, kodukraru, na, on the second tenant, poruthu, first tenant, vandu, landlord, a, consider, pannam. So, ippona, landlord, vandu, t one, kuda, property, a, vaadik, kodukraru, t one, vandu, furthera, on the property, t two, kitta, vaadik, kodukraru, na, t two, poruthu, mattla, t one, na, landlord. Adu, da, the explanation clause. A, a tenant who submits shall be deemed to be a landlord, within the meaning of this act, in relation to the subtenant. Property, poruthu, entera, a, landlord, kadayadu. On the subtenant, poruthu, mattume, a, vandu, landlord, a, consider, pannavanga, t two, mattu, na, t one, vandu, landlord, a, consider, pannavanga. So, adu, the explanation clause, sir. And, uh, uh, section two seven, eh, vandu, member of his family, adu, landlord, poruthu, family member, na, yaru, consider, pannavanga, na, rende, rendi, category, da. The spouse of the landlord, and dependent children. Ella, children, un, kadayadu, dependent children. So, italana, gamanichukkunga, uh, family member of the landlord, na, yaru, solalaa, yaru, who are entitled to be called as a family member of the landlord, na, any, uh, like, spouse, plus, dependent children. Independent children, a, o, illa, and the maru, category, la, vannanga, na, ulavaramattam. So, spouse, plus, dependent children, mattu, na, ninga, vandu, family member of the landlord, un, consider, pannun, section two seven, eh, of the Puducherry Buildings Lease and Rent Control Act, soludhu. And, uh, adukthu, section two clause nine. Two clause nine, vandu, repair, ma, enna, and, term, a, define, mudhu. E, ippona, in the vaad, eh, in the term, specifically, two clause nine, a, select, pannirukka, na. Subsequent, a, nareya, sections, la, repair, pannradhuthu, pathi, o, repair, pannambo, the, enna, procedure, landlord, follow, pannanu. Tenant, kundu, subsequent, eh, enna, right, radhle, abdi, ingra, vision, gil, la, nareya, nama, discuss, pannapurukku. Abdi, irukku, vodhu, repair, na, enna, and radhle, nama, derunchikunna, munnadi, and radhle, vandu, in the section, select, pannirukka. Section two clause nine, vandu, repair, na, enna, and radhle, define, mudhu. Uh, it means the restoration of a building to a sound or good state after D K or injury, but does not include additions, improvements, alterations, except and so far, as they are necessary to carry out such restoration. So, ippona, oru, building, irukku, adu, vandu, ninga, repair, pannanu, na, enna, artta, thul, on the repair, and radhle, vaate, ninga, edhukunna, na, on the building, vandu, damage, ayirchi, illa, on the, on the building, keda, oru, injury, nandhruchu, adu, vandu, injury, na, edanala, na, injury, ayirklu. Illa, remmanal, use, pannikidhe, andhala, vandu, paadu, dandhruchu, paad, ayirchi, and radhle, D K, and radhle. So, and the maru, ayirchna, ninga, on the, on the building, la, on the repair, panna, mattu, na, on the building, a, paaya, nalamaki, koduvarnu, adu, da, on the term, restoration. Paaya, nal, nalamaki, restoration of building to a good state after D K or injury. Itu, ninga, panna, in the, in the repair, panna, mattu, na, on the paaya, nalamaki, nal, nalamaki, building, koduvaru, moodiyu, ingra, madriyan, vision, gil, mattu, na, repair, na, consider, pannanu, section two clause nine, solranga. But, it does not include, edalaa, include, pannadu, additions, improvements, alteration. Ipo, vandu, rendu floor, la, building, irukku, adu, vandu, nalavai, irukku, ninga, vandu, third floor, un, kattiru, yar, abdi, ingra, vandu, uh, building, vandu, endu, radhle, e, erkunave, irukka, rendu floor, nalavaa, irukku. So, ippona, ninga, kattra, mo, na, the floor, and radhle, vandu, additionally, improvement, li, na, varumay, thavara, repair, category, la, varadu. It's not that you cannot add or improve the building, or alter the building, but it will not be called as repair, under section two clause nine. Edo, building, edo, nandhruchu, building, paad, ayirchi, subsequent, a, vandu, on the repair, na, carry out, panna, on the building, a, paaya, nalamaki, koduvaru, moodiyu, na, mattu, na, adu, vandu, repair, and radhle, category, kida, solu. So, section two clause nine, vandu, repair. And it does not include addition, improvement, alteration. It's not that addition, improvement, alteration cannot be done, but it will not be called as repair, under section two clause nine. Adukthu, vandu, section two clause ten, uh, tenants, na, yaru, and radhle, define, pannranga, section two clause ten. So, tenant, plan, na, yaru, and pathol, yar, ademare, tenant, na, yaru, any person by whom, or on whose account, rent is payable for a building, and includes the surviving spouse, or any son, or daughter, or the legal representative of a deceased tenant, who, in case of a residential building, had been living with a tenant. Um, in case of a non-residential building, had been in continuous association with the tenant, for the purpose of carrying on the business. So, tenant, na, yaru. Yaru, vandu, rent, vandu, kattakoodiya, adatla, irukka, avangal, yaru, account, lend, rent, pothu, illa, yaru, account, lend, rent, pooh, avendi, edhukku. So, in the rent, category, la, ulavara, avangalme, tenant, un, edhukunna, un, soli, section two clause ten, soludhu. Ipo, suppos, vandu, tenant, vandu, yarandutara, abdi, na, yaru, vandu, tenant, un, consider, pannanu. Ipo, tenant, yarandutara, and radhle, ho, dan, a, tenancy, terminated, ayitma, na, kadayadu. So, tenant, yarandu, paravu, turn, tenancy, continue, ah, hoogu, vodhu, on the tenant, yarandu, tenant, udai, arthi, kia, yaru, va. So, if he is dead, na, yar, yar, varu, avanga, na, surviving spouse, children, or legal representative. In, nama, vandu, landlord, udai, arthla, vandu, nama, pattu, vandu, uh, family member, na, yaru, consider, pannu, na, spouse, illena, spouse, and dependent children, mattunna. But, anna, inge, vandu, abdi, kadayadu, tenant, yarandutara, na, surviving spouse, kooda, and the children, illa, legal representative. And, itu, rendu, category, a, pirikiranga, residential building, a, runda, on the tenant, kuda, a, yar, lak, on the veetla, irundanglo, avanga, ellarame. Non-residential building, a, edukravachchutla, uh, on the, like, vandu, oru, commercial, purpose, kaha, use, pannikidu, ka, abdi, na, on the, on the commercial, transactions, la, on the business, purpose, kaha, continuous, a, a, and the, yarandu, tenant, kuda, yar, lak, on the, irundilkanglo. So, avanga, ellari, ne, tenant, un, consider, pannanu, section two clause ten, soludhu. Adukthu, vandu, section three. So, ipponama, section, ipponama, variki, pattu, vandu, uh, section, uh, objective, in that act, edukaka, kodu, vandu, and radhle, patho. Uh, nareya, on the nineteen sixty nine time, la, disproportionately high rent, vangnaga, so, tenant, udai, right, pathukakradhe, kaha, on, in that act, kodu, unnanga. Uh, in that act, vandu, in that act, udai preamble, la, nama, pattanu, mo, objective, mo, mo, vision, kaha, in that act, kodu, unnanga, and radhle, nama, derunchitla. To regulate the letting of buildings, both residential and non-residential, and to control the rent payable, and to prevent unreasonable eviction of tenants. So, in the mo, reason, kaha, da, in that act, kodu, unnanga. So, in the thirty-five sections, irukku, rendu, schedule, irukku. Uh, adal, section one, vandu, as usual, vandu, short title, extend, the commencement. Uh, short title, vandu, nama, enna, pattachu. Um, section two, la, eleven terms, defined, manirka. Adal, na, select, pani, or, four terms, mattu, like, subsequent sections, la, nareya, use, pannakoodiya, terms, confuse, ah, koodiya, terms, mattu, select, pani, na, define, pannanu, na, un, go, explain, panna. Two clause four, la, building, na, enna, un, solu. Two clause six, la, government, na, enna, two clause seven, la, landlord, na, yaru, two clause nine, la, repair, na, edadukla, repair, un, kurikyo. And two clause ten, la, tenant, la, yar, yar, illa, tenant, tenant, yarandutara, na, on the position, kia, yar, lak, varu, residential building, a, runda, yar, varu, non-residential building, a, runda, yar, varu, and radhle, two clause ten. And, ipponama, pogg, vurun, section three. Section three, vandu, in that, vandu, exemption clause, madri. In that, vandu, enna, and the, uh, premises, kida, enna, and the buildings, kida, apply, ah, adu. The act does not apply to any premises of government, or any other tenancy-like relationship associated with government. Private individuals own pannakoodiya, buildings premises, kuddu, na, in that act, apply, ah, ho. Government own pannakoodiya, enna, building, ko, in that act, apply, ah, adu. Government own, vandradhun, illama, government, vandu, involve, ayirukku, koodiya, avanga, associate, ayirukku, koodiya, tenancy, madriyan, enna, oru, relationship, urunna, in that act, apply, ah, adu. Like, government, involve, ayirunna, in that act, apply, ah, adu, and radhle, the, section three. It is more or less like exemption clause, madri, okaya. Adukthu, the section four. Section four, vandu, it's a lengthy section. It, a, na, onnumela, procedural aspects, mattu, na, itu, adadu. Notice of vacancy. Like, vandu, oru, uh, like, it's, it's a very lengthy section, a, na, itla, nama, derunchit, may, edhu, like, remba, minimalana, vision, gil, na, like, itla, vandu, eh, na, derunchi, ten classes, ten subclasses, subsections, iruktu. Na, abdi, like, vandu, subsections, madri, illama, na, vandu, arul, enna, enna, eekkun, radhle, obvious, solrana. So, notice of vacancy. Itla, notice of vacancy, vandu. Notice of vacancy, na, ippona, oru, oru, building, irukku, adu, vandu, landlord, vandu, tenant, kundu, lease, or rent, kuda, vitr, karu. So, ippona, on the building, vandu, edo, oru, reason, na, vacate, akuthu. Uh, enna reason, na, vena, arukla, adu, vandu, landlord, vandu, uh, tenancy, terminated, a, da, arukla, illa, rent, alirias, illa, poona, da, arukla, enna reason, kaha, vena, arukla. So, abdi, terminated, a, na, perathu, enna, nadukku, enna, pannanu, landlord, o, tenant, o, enna, pannanu, abdi, ingra, tha, in the section four. Adu, udai, pathingna, notice of vacancy, and radhle, arukku. So, ippona, itla, enna, na, notice of vacancies. Ipo, landlord, un, kodukunna, tenant, un, kodukunna. Landlord, eppe, kodukunna, and radhle, section four clause one, uh, four clause one, one. Tenant, eppe, vandu, on the notice of vacancy, kodukunna, and radhle, vandu, four, one, two, la, solirka. When are, uh, so, ippona, vandu, first, landlord, udai, thu, solrana. Ipo, oru, building, irukku, uh, on the building, vandu, vacant, akuthu, enna, reason, kaha, and radhle, A, B, C, clauses, la, solirka. By his ceasing to occupy it, or by the termination of tenancy, or by the eviction of tenant. Uh, like, vandu, uh, landlord, vandu, on the building, poruthu, thirundhi, reoccupy, pannradhuku, oru, right, varu, subsequent, a, nama, sections, la, pakkavurukku. Andhama, vandu, avar, oru, right, vandu, on the time period, lasts, ayirundu, avar, kundu, suppose, on the reoccupy, pannradhuku, na, right, a, var, yarandutara, andhala, on the notice of, on the time, le, building, vacant, arukku. Adukthu, the tenancy, terminated, ayirchindra, vachchutla, building, vacant, ah, ho, illa, tenant, vandu, galip, pannit, poitara, andhala, building, vacant, ah, ho. In the mo, reason, la, vacant, akuthu, andhala, vachchutla, landlord, enna, pannanu, na, on the vacant, a, var, the, ilerundu, yeel, naal, ikul, he shall send a written notice of vacancy. Yar, kanupunu, na, to the authorized officer, anupunu. To the authorized officer, anupunu. And, where any such building has been requisitioned, under any law, for the time being enforced, other than this act, by the release from such requisition, give notice of writing, give notice of the vacancy, in writing, to the officer authorized, in that behalf, by the government. Like, suppos, vandu, on the, uh, on the particular building, a, oru, government officer, o, illa, government, authorized, pannu, or officer, o, tha, vandu, occupy, pannikrathu, koi, la, government, purposes, kaha, alot, pannradhuku, government, vandu, involve, ayirukka, avangal, on the building, vandu, keder, ka, andhala, vachchutla. Avangal, erkunave, on the request, final landlord, koduthirang, andhala, vachchutla, na, meela, sonna, mo, karnangal, kaha, on the building, vandu, vacant, ayirchna, ho, dan, landlord, vandu, on the, yeel, naal, ikul, la, vacant, a, the, ilerundu, yeel, naal, ikul, la. Yar, in the building, eh, in the government officer, vandu, in the building, vandu, uh, keder, a, on the government officer, vandu, written notice, kodukunna, in the maru, ninga, kedinga, logic, enna, na, ninga, kedinga, la, uh, so, vacant, ayirchi, abdi, ingra, tha, na, avangal, inform, mandra, abdi, ingra, thu, solanu. Adu, time period, vandu, vacant, a, the, ilerundu, yeel, naal, ikul, la, on the landlord, vandu, on the authorized officer, kudukunna. And, ippona, vandu, aduktha, clause, vandu, tenant, eppe, lak, kodukunna, ippona, sonnaila, landlord. So, tenant, eppe, lak, kodukunna, and radhle, clause two. So, every tenant shall, within seven days after the building becomes vacant, by his ceasing to occupy it, or by the termination of his tenancy, give notice of vacancy, in writing, to the officer authorized, in that behalf, by the government. So, ippona, tenant, vandu, enna, reason, kaha, vena, like, vandu, tenancy, terminated, ayirklu, illa, a, on the veetla, galip, pannudhukku, bera, enna, reason, na, lak, terminated, a, 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 galip, pannraru, pannraru, andhala, vachchutla, avar, ko, adhe, time period, na, seven days, ikul, la. Uh, on the building, vacant, a, the, ilerundu, yeel, naal, ikul, la. Uh, so, a, vandu, enna, pannanu, na, in the maru, na, vandu, building, a, vacant, pannra, on the building, vandu, vacant, a, irukku, abdi, ingra, vision, etha. Notice, vandu, on the, ask, officer, authorized, vandu, officer, authorized, kuda, address, pani, notice, kodukunna. So, itla, landlord, kuda, tenant, kuda, commonana, vision, vandu, a, time period, seven days, ikul, a, kodukunna, abdi, ingra, thu, clause, one and two, la, nama, pattukku. So, ippona, itla, vandu, rendu, explanation, class, irukku, one, vandu, uh, eppe, vandu, in the notice, vandu, kodukunna, avasya, illa, illa, adu, kodukkama, avanga, vandu, cross, pannikka, na, nama, nannakiru. adhuk kurukama avanga vandu cross pannitanga nama nainakiru, adhuk deem pannikla. Uh avar vandu in the notice, in the section four keeza avarku, avar landlord or tenant melleyo avangalke kuruthrukku duty indharada avanga eppe sayyama porangan nama deem pannikla, abdingirathu explanation one. In the explanationna section ten padushana nama kuruyu, adhavandu tenla vandu enannagroundsle evicpanalanu soli solirvanga. So andhugroundsena nama terunchikrapachutla da in the explanation one na nama understand pannikinju. So explanation two na soldran. Buyer, who having obtained vacant possession of a building in persons of a sale of such building, lets the whole or part of it to a tenant or allows the whole or part of it to be occupied by any, by a person or who without obtaining such vacant possession allows the seller to occupy the whole of the building shall be deemed to have failed to give notice under this section. So in the section keeza, ipo oru buildingirukku, andhui buildinga poruthu, uh andhui owner vandu enna pannidhunna, oru buyeruk vitthararunavichkong. Subsequentda andhui buyer vandu, andhui building, andhui andhui property poruthu vacant possessiona maankirar. Mangana parathu, andhui buildingoda hole illa na oru particular portion, oru tenantuk vandu uh onna lease ukbitraru illa rentuk bitraru, abdina, adu oru situation. Rendava situation, vittha parathu, like vandu seller vandu buyeruk vittharar. Adu vittha parathu vacant possessiona maangala, buyer vandu vacant possessiona maangala. Vittha varai, like sellerai enna panntraruna, sellerai vandu okay ninga anga tangikanga, ninga vandu lease kurunga, rentuk kurunga, abindramadri. Buyerukku sellerukku naduloru agreement vandu, avar vandu andhui seller, vittha var vandu andhui propertyle tangirukkaa indhurupachutla, in the buyer vandu section four keeza notice kurukala, enna in the vacant possession andhui building vacant de ahaalanindhamadri da, notice, building vacant aachina da vandu notice kurukunnonu indhu section four. So in the madri avang vandu vacant possessione maangala, illa maangana odane vera orta goldduk kuruthitanga. So landlord vandu mararanga, buildinga orutharkaila andhino orutharkaila pothu indhu pothu. Idhul andhui vacancy indhav, visayame eyarpadala indhuramadriyana situationna arukku. So in the mari time la, notice avarku kurukala, abdingirathu na nama eduthukunno, shall be deemed to have failed to give notice under this section. So in the, in the failure kaana, uh like effects enna indhurudhu na subsequentda nama vatho, avarku kurukala indhurudhu nama vandu deem pannikunno. Abdingirathu na explanation two. And notice ipu kurukunno indhurudhu nama ellai vatho. Uh rulesla vandu in the noticela enna content urukunno indhurudhu prescribe pannirkang. So in the noticela enna date urukunno, yarukka address pannirukku, officer authorized. Indhavari in the tedi lavenkantachu, abindramadri details alla rulesla kuruthirkanga. And adukthu section four class two padikiranana. Where the tenant of a building puts an another, puts another person in occupation thereof and does not reoccupy it within a pe uh within a period of three months, then on the expiry of such period, the tenancy shall be deemed to have been terminated and it shall be the duty of tenant and also the land, and also of the landlord if he is aware of such termination, to give notice thereof in writing to the authorized officer within days of such, within seven days of such termination. So suppose na vandu uh Raji Mamuk vandu, buildinga vandu rentuk bitrakkenavichkong. Raji Mam vandu subsequentda vandu vera orta avangalke vandu rentuk bitrakanganavichkong. Uh rentukkanu kadeyadu, vera orta avangal occupationla, avangalke da na rentuk bitrakken, yenakkoo avangalke da landlord tenancy relationship irukku. So avanga vandu vera orta avangal andhui viitla vandu tangavikiranganavichkong. Puts another person in occupation. Avada occupationna, idhul vandu rental, avangal vandu sublet pannranga, subrent pannranga indhukadeyadu. Andhui viit poruthu vera orta avangal, vera orta avangal vandu occupy pannavichchitanga naale in the clause apply aho. So ipanama vandu Raji Mamke enno oru viit vandu vaadayik kurukur, Raji Mam vandu vera orta avangal andhui propertyla occupy pannavikiranga. And apri avanga occupy pannavichchit tedi lirundu, oru moone maastu undhurudhu statutory period. Idhuthin, andhui avanga apri vera orta avangal occupy pannavichchit tedi lirundu, moone maastukla Raji Mam vandu reoccupy pannanu. Apri pannalangindhurupachutla, andhui period expire anak tedi la. Andhui tenancy, yenakkoo Raji Mamku illa tenancy vandu terminated anadaa deem pannikunno, abdingirathu in the section. Enna logic naadu, like na vandu buildinga kuruthudhu Raji Mamke da. So avanga vandu vera yarthiada viit saaviya kuruthitukku, irkanga, konnaal irunduganga, abdin soldranga, abdina. Okay reasonable perioda, three months vandu statutory solirukku. Andhui three months yon taandi Raji Mam vandu andhui viitoda possessionuk poolana, as a landlord na vandu keldukepalliya, na avangalke da na vaadayik kurutta, ipu vera yaravandu tangirkangali, abdin na kelpalliya. So adhavandu statutorya address pani, three months kulla kurukunno, three months kulla Raji Mam vandu possession edukunno, adal tenant vandu reoccupy pannanu, apri pannalana, yenakkoo andhui three months period lapse ana odane yenakkoo Raji Mamku illa tenancy indhurudhu expire ayadu, terminated ayadu indhurudhu solirkanga. Apri vandu ta, ipan vandu enna pannanu na, uh abdi terminated aanune Raji Mamu illa yenakkum vandu Raji Mam vandu andhui visayathu vandu, like andhui buildinga vandu uh vera orta avangalke occupy pannavichchitanga indhui visayathu yenakkut terunchidhu, as a landlord yenakkut terunchidhu na, naano Raji Mamu uh enna pannanu na, andhui notice, adhavu terminated ayirchi, tenancy, building vacant aarukku, abdingirathu, as usual within seven days authorized officerki inform pannanu, abdingirathu. And ipan adukthadu na solapurudhu vandu provided class. Provided that where the tenant obtains written permission from the authorized officer to reoccupy the building within a period of six months, this subsection shall have, after the period of three months specified thereon, a period of six months where substituted. Na three months unna liya, ipan Raji Mamku na kuruthudhu vandu uh rentuk bitrakken, avanga vandu subsequentda vera orta avangal occupy pannasoldranga. Aana vandu three months kulla avanga eduthukunno, abdingirathu statute. Andhui three months indhurudhu vandu, uh three months indhurudhu vandu tenant vandu. Excuse me. Uh sorry, um so ipan the three months unna liya, so in the three months indhurudhu vandu eppe three months na uh Raji Mam vandu vera orta avangal occupy pannavichchit vandu authorized officertte, solama avangalke decide pani avang vandu bitrannanga, abdina, andhui three months time period. Suppose Raji Mam vandu authorized officertte permission mangi, adhavu yenakkoo kayalai ikkunna rental agreement irukku. Aana vandu na vandu ivangala vandu occupy panna solirkken, abdin authorized officertte solitte vera orta avangala vandu occupy panna solirkara vachutla. Andhui three months period indhurudhu vandu six monthsa expand aho. Six months varakyo Raji Mamku vandu andhui right irukku, like right na Raji Mam kadeyadu. Vera orta avangal vandu andhui yaratthila vandu, andhui buildinga poruthu occupy panna soludhu. Andhui time period vandu it will be expanded from a period of three months to six months, other provided class. And adukthadu vandu section, uh like adhe sectionla, class three. If within ten days of the receipt of, uh if, if within ten days of the receipt by the authorized officer of a notice from landlord under subsection one or subsection two, the government or authorized officer do or does not intimate to the landlord in writing that the building is required for the purposes of government or union tiri, or state or central government, or of any local authority, or of any public institution under the control of such government, or for the occupation of any officer of such government, the landlord shall be at liberty to let the building to any tenant or to occupy it himself. Landlord vandu ipan notice of vacancy indhurudhu authorized officerkuk kurukunnonu soldranliya. So ipan authorized officerkuk notice kurukram. Andhui authorized officer ipan enna pannuvaru? Kurukunno, landlord kurukunno, tenant kurukunno, authorized officer kurukunno, ivanga eppe kurukunno, abdingiravishayangalna mattunna idu varikipatho. So ipan notice vandu authorized officerreached pannirichu. See ipan avarku notice karesparathu, avar enna pannuvaru, abdingirathu na ipan adukthu portion. So avar vandu notice receive aanata tedi lirundu, patthun naalikulla reply ponam. Andhui ten days indhurudhu vandu mandatory wait period, andhui ten days moodira variki landlord wait panniga aho. He cannot take another decision. He, he has to wait, he shall wait for a period of ten days uh for the reply from authorized officer. Ipo suppose andhui ten days period kulla, authorized officer vandu, illa payanak in the building man na, ni o isthuthukki lease bittukko. Ni onno oru decisiona ni eduthukko, abdin soli avar reply pannitara, oru rendava oru naalay reply pannitara indhurupachutla. Landlord vandu odane idu pannilam, avar patthun naalikvariki wait pannanu na avasya unla. Reply varadu kaha avar patthun naal wait pannanu. Once avar vandu reply vandu authorized officertendu bandrichu yenakkum in the building man na, abdin nalaa odane vandu avar vandu decide pannilam landlord. So. Ipo suppose vandu ten days ayirichu, uh building vandu, like vandu authorized officertendu replya varla, abdin na. Landlord vandu, he can still continue to decide us, enna, avar vandu avar isthuthukki buildinga yarukvena lease or rentuk o bitalam. Suppose ten days kares, illa ten days kula, illa avar vandu authorized officer vandu reply pandraru. Yeenakkum vandu in the building manu, ivangalke in the, adhavu ipan vandu housing kodla naan vandu ivangalke alaot pannro. Illa vandu, uh taas, yar, edo oru government officertki in the viitnaa alaot pannaporu, abdin idho soldranga, abdin na. Uh landlord vandu wait pannanu, wait pannanu na, oru alaotment order, subsequentda, he cannot take a decision otherwise, abdingirathu na adh. So idhul moone scenario urukku, landlord vandu authorized officerkun notice antunune, ten days mandatory wait period irukku. Andhui ten days kulla, uh authorized officer vandu, moone, like, in, in the, the ten days wait period kulla moone visayangal nadakla. Onnu, andhui ten days kulla authorized officer reply pani yenakkum in the building mananu solalaa. Mananu solitara, landlord vandu, avar resthuthukki yarukvena kurukla. Abdi in the ten days kulla, avar vandu authorized officer yenakkum manu solitara, abdin na. Avar yarukthu soldrara, avarku mattunna landlord kurukunno. Adukthadu moonaadu situation, ten days lapse ayirichu, landlord tendu replya varla, I mean authorized officer tendu replya varla. Abdingimodu, uh, uh like vandu landlord vandu yarukvena ala bital. So in the moone da situation. Ten days indhurudhu mandatory wait period. And Ipo suppose na sunna liya, authorized officer vandu yenakkum in the building manu, in the buildinga na ivangalke alaot pannaporu. Andhui government purpose kaha engilkitu tevapodu, abdin reply pannitara na. Landlord vandu, apri reply receive pannat time lirundu, forty eight task kulla, buildinga vandu, governmentoda possessionla kuruthur. Andhui forty eight task indhurudhu vandu delay aachi, abdingirathu, delay aachi na vichkongla, andhui forty eight task kulla kurukunnonu indhurudhu landlordoda kadama. Andhui delay, andhui forty eight task lapse ayirichu, forty eight task kantiyichu, adhuk melaa vandu, like, adhuk taandi da avarala possession kurukumudidhunna. Andhui, andhui delayke vandu landlord reason illa. If, if that delay was not because of the fault of landlord na, andhui eppe delivery kurukramlo, andhui tedi lirundu, andhui time lirundu mattunna tenancy consider pannavu. Ipo tappu vandu landlord melanavichkongla, andhui delay forty eight task kulla kurukumudiyama ponnadu, karname landlord da indhurupachutla. Andhui authority enna data vandu decide panntraroh, andhui date lendi tenancy vandu idaay. Obviously, tappu onga melanimodu na soldrat tedi lendi da, like vandu, uh government authority naan vichkongla. Uh tappu vandu landlord melana, ni kur, onnaalada delay aachi, sonnaalada delay aachi modu na soldrat tedi lendi tenancy consider pannikunno. Like ipan suppose na reply anuchchala, andhui tedi lendi da tenancy consider pannanu. Illa in the tedi lendi pannanu, andhui data decide pannra, idhuvandu, uh authorityk vandru, like, uh government officerk vandru. Uh landlord melakappe lengindhurupachutla, enneke delivery kuruthana, annel enne tenancy consider pannidu. So idhuda section, like four la adukthadu portions. And uh section four three A vandu, the government may, on the application made by the landlord, within fifteen days from the date of communication of intimation by the authorized officer, rectify any apparent, any error apparent on the face of record. Like vandu landlord vandu, uh like authorized officerkku landlorduk oru set of communications narukkudu. Ivara vandu landlord vandu notice of vacancy kurukraru, authorized officer vandu oru reply kurukkurukraru. So in the notice kana time, andhui reply kana time la na nama ipan vatho. So idhul edo oru error narukkudu, apparenta narukkudu. Paatala idhuk tappu untheriyo, in the noticeleyo, in the replyleyo, paatala idhuk tappu untheriyo, error narukkudu, abdingirapachutla. Andhui error rectify pannanu na enna pannanu? Landlord vandu, he has to make an application. Yarukkena, government vandu, governmentkuttha address pani application make pannanu. Eppe ikkula pannanu, within fifteen days from the date of communication of intimation. The authorized officer anupurar reply tedi lirundu, patthun nijnaalikulla landlord vandu governmentuk apply panni. In the, in the noticela, in the replyla, in the error vandu apparenta aridhi, idhuk rectify pannikuruganu soli kerkala, abdingirathu, section four three A. Adukthu section four four, where intimation is given under subsection one, the landlord shall not let the building to a tenant or occupy it himself or use or permit the use of building in any manner by any other person before the expiry of the period of ten days specified in subsection three, unless in the meantime he has received intimation from the authorized officer that the building is not required for the purpose or for the occupation by any other, by any of the officers specified in that subsection. Na sunna liya, authorized officer vandu reply pannitara that yenakkum in the building, in the purpose kaha, government purpose kaha, tevapodu, no authorized officer reply pannitara. Abdi pannitara indhurupachutla, landlord vandu enna pannak pooradu. Andhui authorized officer sonna reply againsta, endhui decisionu edukukuradu. Like vandu authorized officer vandu in the purpose kaha, reserve pannitara buildinga. So abdi avar reserve pannadukapron, landlord vandu tanitsiya vandu vera endhui mudiga edukukuradu indhurudhu, section four four. Adukthu section four five vandu, if the building is required for any pur, any of the purpose or for the occupation by any of the officers specified in subsection three, the landlord shall deliver possession of the building and the fixtures and fittings in or on the buildings in a good, tenable, repair and condition to the authorized officer or to the alaoty named by the authorized officer as the case may be, and the government shall be deemed to be the tenant of the landlord with retrospective effect from the date on which the authorized officer received the notice under subsection two or one, the terms of tenancy being such as may be agreed upon between the landlord and the tenant and in default of an agreement as may be defined, uh as may be determined by the controller. So idhulena na? So okay, ipan vandu notice kurukramga, landlord vandu in the madri building vacant aarukuna, authorized officer vandu reply kurukraru, yenakkum in the building in the purpose kaha tevandu. So ipan enna pannanu, landlord enna pannanu, enna pannakuradu na munna vatho, tanitsiya vera decision edukukuradu, oru munna vathu class. Ipo enna na, landlord enna pannanu? Andhui buildinga vandu, nalaa, like, kudiyarakudiyaa, anga irukka, irukka madri, irukka, andhui, andhui buildinga vandu should be in a good tenable condition. Like vandu andhui buildinga vandu, andhui buildingla, ipan irukka madriyana oru situationa create panni andhui authorized officertte, illa andhui authorized officer yaravandu kaykattaramlo, ivangalke da na alaot pannirken, ivangalte kuruthur. Illa yenkitayakurun naa media vathikra, so yaravandu either to the authorized officer or to the alaoty named by the authorized officer vandu, landlord vandu, andhui buildingyo, andhui premisesyo, possession vandu kurutharunno, indhurudhu, section four class five. Idhul nareya provided classes irukku, in the four class filega adukthu adukthu adukthu. So ipan vandu suppose, uh forty eight task kulla building vandu possession kurukunnonu soli solirunna liya. So the forty eight task lapse ayirichu. Ipo enna aho, enna reason kaha abdi aachi indhurudhu authorities pakkanga first. So abdi avanga pathuthu enna reason kaha, ok, satisfy aachi na, extra time kurupangu. Or, and, like, on the section padikiram, provided that where the landlord fails to deliver possession of the building to the authorized officer within forty eight hours, uh that the building is required for any purpose or for the occupation by any of the officers specified or within such for the time as the authorized officer may order in writing aloud, the government shall be deemed to be the tenant of the landlord only from the date on which he delivers the possession. So ipan suppose vandu forty eight task kulla avang kurukunno, landlord vandu kurukala, enna reason kaha indhurudhu pakkanga, pathuthu en, uh like vandu eppe vandu avar possession kurukraru, appel endudha andhui tenancy begina. Appri begina avar a tenancy poruthu, government da deemed tenant a eatvang, deemed tenant na direct tenant kadeyadu. Enna avanga vandu directa government use pannapurudhala, avanga vandu yarukada alaot pannaporanga, illa vera dal purposeka use pannaporanga. So eppe avar vandu possession forty eight task kulla kurukunno, abdi kurukalindhurupachutla, eppe kurukrala, appel endudha andhui tenancy begina aho. Appri begina avar a tenancy poruthu, gar, government da shall be deemed to be the tenant. And adukthu provided class, provided further that where owing to any omission or act or obstructive or preventive tactics on the part of the landlord, there has been delay in coming to a decision whether or not the building is required for any of the purposes or for the occupation by any of the officers, the government shall be deemed to be the tenant of landlord only from such other date as may be fixed by the authorized officer uh having regard to uh the circumstances of each case. So ipan suppose vandu edo oru reason kaha na vandu andhui, like, na vandu landlord vichkong. Authorized officer, government vandu entha vandu, in the purpose kaha, na notice of vacancy kuruthuparathu, avanga yenakkum reply pannranga. In the purpose kaha, ivangalke kalaut pannradhaka, in the building yenakkut tevapodu. Na enna pannra, yenakkadla isthun illa. Yeenakkadla isthun illa, so na enna pannra, edo oru delay pannra, edo oru tactics panni. Andhui, like, vandu, andhui And like when the authorized officer is confused. This building is, for this purpose, used? Is it possible? If he decides, I am making a mistake. And the decision, his delay. So the reason for the delay, I am only, I am only doing it. He doesn't decide. I am making a mistake. Whenever he formally decides, okay, this building is used for this purpose. Then the decision comes. And the date, tenancy begins. This is the provided clause. Because it is logic. So tenancy, he is taking the orders. I am only doing tactics, creating objections. I am only deciding. So after that, the delay is fixed. Punishment is different. So whenever he decides, the day is fixed, tenancy begins. Now what is the loss? He has been in the day until he decides. So on the date, he decides. Authority is my fault. So, after the provided clause, provided also that the rent payable shall be the fair rent, if any, fixed for the building under the provisions of this act. And if no warrant has been fixed, such reasonable rent as the authorized officer may determine in such manner as may be prescribed. So now the building is taken, the question is taken. So how much rent to give? When the building is decided, the authority controller ordered it. Only the warrant is paid. Suppose, if the warrant is fixed, authority officer fixes a reasonable rent. Look at the situations, prescribe it, authority officer says the rent. Consider it as a rent payment. This is the next provided clause. Provided also that the reasonable rent fixed by the authorized officer under the foregoing provision shall be subject to such warrant as may be fixed by the controller. The authorized officer fixes the rent. It is not the final decision. So authorized officer fixes the rent, as the landlord, I think there is an objection. He is saying a lot. I think, what to do? I can go on an appeal. Ultimate authority to decide the warrant quantum. How much, for the building, warrant is received? Give it, decide it. Authority is the controller. If the controller is there, he ordered it. And the order passed, like the order said, the warrant is applied. If not, authority officer says. So authority officer's decision is not the final. And the explanation clause, that before the fixation of warrant, rent has been paid in excess thereof, the refund or adjustment shall have retrospective effect from the date on which government shall be deemed to be the tenant of the landlord. Provided the application for fixation of warrant is made within a period of 90 days from such date. Where such application is made, after the set period of 90 days, the refund and adjustment shall be limited to amount paid in excess for the period commencing on the date of application by the tenant or landlord for which the fixation of warrant and ending with date of such fixation. Like suppose, the warrant is not fixed. But rent is given. Like landlord, tenant is given. So after that, what will happen? Authority officer said, I am giving rent. But in the rent, there is no warrant. Landlord or tenant apply, controller goes. Controller gives an order passed. And the order has retrospective effect. It will go back. In that case, controller gives an order passed. For this building, 50 rupees, he said. I have bought 100 rupees. And that is the reason. Before I bought 100 rupees, we have to set up the 50 rupees. Suppose I bought a lot, we can adjust it. If you buy a lot, we can adjust it. If you buy a lot, we can adjust it. This is the provided clause. Sorry, explanation clause. So this way, the retrospective effect, this right, when will come? The tenant is inside. And the building is inside. The tenancy begins, 90 days only, from the date of tenancy, warrant fixed, application is filed. Only when the warrant fixed, application is filed. This retrospective effect concept is applied. And the next provided clause, provided also that on delivery of possession of the building, the almighty shall pay the rent to the landlord proportionately for any part of the calendar month of one occupation and in advance on or before the fifth day of each calendar month. So now the rent is decided. If there is a warrant, what to do? Authority decides. He is saying it is the final. Controller goes. So after fixing it, there are changes. How to adjust? We have seen. So now the rent payable is agreed. So when to give it? On or before fifth day of each calendar month, given. Provision is said. Next, provided also that no structural alterations shall be made in the building unless the consent of the landlord is obtained therefore. So okay, tenant, like building is taken. If you want to go, the building is structural. We can change it. You are, you are, you are just a tenant. So that is, when the tenancy period ends, the building is enjoyed. Only you are right. Only that is, you can do any kind of alteration. Structural alteration cannot be done. Like when I am in a residential building, I have a parking space. In that parking space, I like, like a small room. I have a like a small hotel opened. That is structural alteration. So that is what you cannot do. I am buying the landlord's consent. But without the consent of landlord, no structural alterations shall be made in the building. That is a provided clause. Next, 4 clause 6. If in the case of a residential building, the possession of which has been delivered to the authorized officer, the warrant is subsequently fixed at an amount not exceeding 25 rupees, the said officer shall be deemed to have become the tenant of the landlord on the date on which such warrant is fixed on the same terms, except as to rent as obtained between landlord and the government on the said date. This is what I said, when the tenancy begins. A condition is given. Like when the fixed one, the warrant is 25 rupees. Fixed at an amount not exceeding 25 rupees. Now it is an amount. But way back to 1969, when the 19th year. Not exceeding 25 rupees per month. Whenever the officer, tenant, and the premises support are considered. And when the warrant is fixed, he shall be, he shall be deemed to have become the tenant. So that is section 4 clause 6. Next, 4 clause 7. In case not falling under section 5, subsection 5, where the landlord lets the building to any tenant after giving notice to the authorized officer and without having occupied the building himself or used or permitted the use of the building in any manner by any other person, the tenancy shall be deemed to have been anti-dated by the number of days during which the landlord was prohibited from letting the building to any tenant by words of subsection 4. Like when we have seen in the previous sections, landlord gives notice of vacancy. It is on that day, 7 days. So mandatory wait period, 10 days. In the 10 days, authority officer gives anything. Like when I said, I don't want it. 10 days left. So 10 days, landlord is the last. You tell us, I wait. If you want, you say before. If you don't want, you do it. So 10 days is wasted. Now, subsequently, officer, government, this building, least or 20 minutes. I decide. I will give it to you. And the reason is not found. I need the mandatory wait period, I am looking at the tenancy. This is section 4 clause 7. The tenancy shall be deemed to have been anti-dated by the number of days during which the landlord was prohibited. How much, like when the premises owner, I know about it. Statute, mandatory wait period, you give it. What is your authority? So the whole period is considered. I am looking at the tenancy. Section 4 clause 7. So this is, in the 35 sections, these are one of the few provisions where landlord is being given a right. Next, section 4 clause 8. Where a landlord has two or more residential buildings in the same commune and they have not been already led by him, then within 15 days from the date on which the act comes into force or from the date on which the landlord comes to have more than one such building, whichever is later, whatever it is, the landlord may choose any one of such buildings for his own occupation and shall give notice to the authorized officer of the building so chosen by him and of every other building not chosen. Like when, I am a landlord, I am a landlord. I have a, like, I have a, I have 3 buildings in the same area. I have a, I have a, I have a. I am occupying any building. Which building is vacant? So this building is, for this purpose, I am occupying. This is what I need to know, authority officer. So in the section, only notice. Vacancy is not only. 2 buildings, 3 buildings. More than one is present. Which building am I, what is the use? Which building is vacant? This is 4 clause 8. Then giving notice as supposed, the landlord shall also specify that whether if more than one is present. So one, I am putting it. Obviously, suppose, only one is needed. As a landlord, I need it. In the notice, I want to say. I have 3 buildings in this area. I am 1. 2, I have 2. But one is needed. Like, for what? Specialize in it. My dependent member, my dependent family member is needed. Like when, where he requires any such building for the occupation of any member of his family or any dependent of his, and if so, where the member dependent, as the case may be, is residing and the necessity for any change, for any change of residence. Like, for what is this building? Wherever you have it, it is there. So after that, if you think, you need extra, you need it for what? Only authority officer knows. 4.8b. And next, 4.8c. The authorized officer may, if, may, if he is satisfied that residential building is required bona fide for the occupation of any member. So now I am saying, I have it. You need extra, I need it. This is the reason, I need it. I am telling the authorized officer. After that, the authorized officer will see. What reason? We will analyze. After that, okay, he is saying it. The landlord, the building, second, additional, is needed. So he will make an order permitting the landlord to allow such member or dependent, as the case may be, to occupy the residential building. For, he must specify a period. And the reason is, like suppose, like, my dependent child, the kid is in the school, cannot travel. So in the school, the kid is 11 years old. So period of 2 years, they occupy it. So the reason is, authority is the authority officer. So if the reason is not bona fide, I think, then the authorized officer, reject it too. So the authorized officer, we will do 2 things. First, allow the application. After that, specify the time period. If not, 2 things, the application is not bona fide. If he feels so, he can reject the application. And next, section 4.8d. Any landlord is who is agreed by any order passed by the authorized officer. Now I said, authorized officer, pass the order. And the authorized officer, suppose, pass the order. Landlord is against it. I am a landlord, I agree. What is the option? I am going to appeal. Who wants it, accommodation, authority? Appeal in writing. At what time? Within 7 days from the date of receipt of such order. After the order passed, I receive it. 7 days, I have to appeal. Who wants it, accommodation, authority? So he is like, he can stay the further proceedings. So, final decision, appeal, until like, eviction, or any reason, like, subsequently, they are giving possession. Whatever procedure is, he stays. Like, it is a may. So next, section e. Every notice given by the landlord relates to any residential building other than one shall be deemed to be a notice under subsection 1. Now, when it is vacant, I am saying. This 4.8, 4 clause 8, the notice is given, section 4 clause 1 is considered. Next, 4.9. Any officer empowered by the government in this behalf may summarily dispose any landlord, tenant, or any person occupying any building in contravention to the provisions. Like, in the act, provisions are contravened. A landlord, a tenant, or another person is occupying the building. And the authorized officer, government empowered officer. Like, summarily, detailed. Summary, he is disposed of. Authority is there. This is section 4.9. Next, 4.92. Any such officer, as is referred, may summarily dispose any officer local authority continuing the like, private person only. Now, the tenant, government alert person. Whether it is government or not, the authorized officer has a right. This is section 9.2, 9a2. And provided that in cases where landlord has been refused permission for the occupation, not less than 7 days notice shall be given before action is taken in under this section. So in this section, he is disposed of. Landlord, landlord, 7 days notice period mandatory. Minimum of 7 days notice period. Give it, in this section, action is taken. And next, if free access to the building is not afforded to the officer empowered, he may at any time after sunrise or before sunset, after giving reasonable warning, facility and facility to withdraw any women not appearing in public according to the customs of the country, remove or open any lock or bolt or gate, open any door, or do any other act necessary for affecting such disposition. Dispose of it, authority has a right. This is the previous provision. So after that, he is disposed of. If they are cooperating, what to do? Sunrise, sunset, reasonable warning, give it, follow up, he is disposed of. Break open, he has a right. Next, any landlord, tenant, or any other officer liable to be summarily disposed shall pay to the government. Now, summary, they disposed of. So after that, what will happen? So, and the rent, who pays? So, the warrant payable for the building under the provisions of this act for for the period of his occupation or possession thereof described in that clause, the expenses incurred by the government, all of it, landlord or tenant, like, in the disposed of. They are, government, they are. Who disposed of? They are going to go. This is section 4.8, 4.9c. Next, d. If the authorized officer who takes the possession of the building under clause is of the opinion that the building is not in a tenable condition, disposed of. After that, authority officer takes possession. After that, the building is like, good, good. Untenable condition is there. And the building is in good, tenable condition. What to do? Repair it, list is prepared. List is prepared, after that, the list is added, landlord gives it. In the notice, reasonable timing is said, this is the repair is carried out. After that, the landlord is repairing it. Landlord, like, when the government officer, what to do? Government officer, or not, who is telling? They are repairing it. And the carried out, the rent payable is calculated. Monthly installment is calculated. And that is monthly installment, maximum of 1 half hour. Like suppose, I have 10,000 rupees. I have my monthly salary. Like, 10,000 rupees, I am cleaning the house. If I have 2,000 rupees a month, I will buy 1,000 rupees a month. Maximum of shall no case, monthly installments shall exceed, no case, like, exceed cannot be done. Maximum of 1 half month. And last clause, napkin contained in this section shall apply to a residential building, monthly rent of which does not exceed 25 rupees. To a non-residential building, the monthly